You would join me in the play?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sue, would you do a roll call, please?
Elder woman Dobbs, here. Alderman Bennett. Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Bennett.
Here.
Alderman Eidman.
Here.
Alderman Reinen.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Steiger.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thanks very much. Move to approval of tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No presentations, personal appearances, so take us down to city administrators' report.
We've got a revision at your seats. Item one you might be interested in is that Alliance has now included us with their work order system. And this is for maintenance items. We do a separate work order system through G-Works for water issues, but this is for something on the street, lights, if there's a pothole, something along those lines, we'll include that. So now it gets sent to Alliance, it's emailed to their departments, depending upon which department it is intended for, and then we can track what's going on with it. And then item six, it looks like next week for Joker's paving on North Fourth Street, the rain has delayed them. Also, they just have had other projects they've had to get done, and those were delayed because of the recent rains. So this will put it in the next budget year, but we want them to finish the project, or do the project, so figure middle of next week that it gets started.
Happy, I guess we don't put any timeframe on those contracts?
No.
Okay. Might be something we want to think about.
Because what will happen is they'll put us in a rotation, and so they're working their way back to St. Genevieve, and then eventually ending up north in Jefferson County. So they're doing a couple of projects here locally. So we're not the only one. I think they're also working on the parking lot at where Country Market is. So that's just, we get lumped into that. And I don't know if it's, unless it's in the summer, because we missed the two months when schools closed, that would be the only time that would be optimal to have them do that.
Right.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Take us to staff reports. First up tonight will be Chief Crum.
Do you have a copy of my report? Not a whole lot on there, out of the ordinary. Nick Cuscinelli did start with the school district as the SRO, and then we had two guys show interest in the K-9 taking over it. So they're going through a testing phase now with a master trainer, and we should have a suggestion on that in the next week or so.
About it. I'm seeing none has any questions.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Thank you, chief.
And then next up, we'll have Corey Litteris with Alliance Water.
Corey, I'm actually going to tag team this report tonight. So first order of business, I wanted to officially announce Corey Litteris as the local manager for Alliance. He's been with us seven years, serving as superintendent. He knows the ropes, he's been able to slide him in that role seamlessly. I've been really happy with what he's done so far. I expect nothing but great things out of him. If you don't have his cellphone number, I'm sure he'd be glad to provide that to you. So with this transition and leadership, it was a good opportunity to sit down with Happy and talk about this operations report and find out what you wanted to see in it, maybe things you didn't want to see. So it's entirely new format there. I think most notable, you'll see that table on the first page, and those are the metrics that Happy had asked us to track. So this was our first month of putting these numbers in this report for you. As we start tracking it on a regular basis, it'll grow, and you'll be able to see trends and see those numbers grow or shrink, and be able to ask questions and again, just see those trends. So I think that you'll find that really useful. And we have some other numbers, too, that we just weren't able to get in there with only the one month of data, but we'll have water loss in there going forward, we'll have hours of mower operations, playground repairs. There are other items, too. Again, the first month, this is only going to get better, but hopefully that is useful information, and you all wanted to see that. On the second page, I'll mention the revised MOA, so you have the first and second readings of the ordinance tonight. I was able to look at that again and drop it down, so now it is a proposed 2.9% increase. And I'll explain what that is. When we submitted the proposal last time, that was at a point where we did not have a local manager. So there was a placeholder in for that salary. Luckily, Corey here did not peggle too much, so we were able to drop down from, again, what was estimated for that salary. But that's the reason for the difference, that was the big difference. And then I spelt out just some of the other increases that we're faced with, that there's really, really kind of out of our control. There are some, specifically chemicals have just been crazy. So I'm going to turn it over to Corey. And if you all have any questions, I may still be here.
I got a report in front of you guys. The Mack truck is scheduled to be delivered tomorrow, 10:30. Got confirmation this morning, so two years in the making on that. And the craft go, the crack film machine, you guys approved last meeting, is delivered. It's at the street department. Probably in two weeks, the salesman will be down, Dave, to do a demo, so pass that along to Happy or you can pass it along to you guys or whatever you might want to swing by and take a look, what you guys purchased, or there it is.
So I like the new report format. My input about this table, if you pick out that potholes repaired number, that's a more meaningful metric if you have some method to go into your trouble, your work order system. So if I saw 15 out of X, so what, the number that are logged, like awaiting to be worked, if I knew that number, then that gives me that raw number and then a percentage. It's a little bit more meaningful if you're open to that.
Absolutely.
Are these numbers in this table and stuff, does this correlate to a calendar month, or is this? It does, so it's hard.
It starts with 31st or plus.
Right.
Yeah, it says at the top, monthly total, it's hard to see, but in the gray area there. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much. At this time, we will open up the meeting for public comment. What comment at this time?
My name's Kathy Kreiter, and I'm the domestic violence advocate for St. Genevieve, and I wanted to let everybody know that we're having the rally. It's a rally against domestic violence. It's going to be at the River Rapids Water Park on October 5th, from 10 to 3:00. We're really excited about it. So it's for domestic violence, and we're going to have hand fabricated trophies, and one of the cycle one is 24 inches long, it's on a 24-inch wrench, and then the actual cycle is 23 inches long, so it's really cool. And we have a 15-inch tall domestic violence trophy, and that's going to be voted on just by domestic violence victims. So if you know anybody, pass the word, they get a ticket from a person wearing a white scarf, the leaders, and they can vote for that directly. And our local shelters, we have two of them that are going to come and bring their people just to vote on that trophy, so we're really excited about that. Let's see, also with that, the kids get to vote, everybody gets to vote, you get to judge the vehicles. So after the kids vote, they're going to get a sticker, and then they're going to get free raffle tickets for a raffle for $150 total value, so that's really awesome, too. We have a lot of free things, like Luna Ice is going to give 100 free ICs out. Let's see, what else do we got going? We have a lot of emergency vehicles. Our sheriff has promised us to do a K-9 unit, and the Dare is going to be there, we're going to have three different wreckers there. It's just going to be a lot of fun. And Scooter Burgers is going to be there, we're going to have Iron Dogs, truck is going to be there, food truck. We're also wanting to raise awareness for domestic violence through this, and we have Courtney Cassidy, who's going to be a big vocal voice for us with domestic violence, and she wants to invite all of the aldermen and anybody who wants to come. She wants to have a meeting and talk with you guys about domestic violence in St. Genevieve. And if anybody wants to know about domestic violence in St. Genevieve, we did What's New on the program last night, it's the September 25th program. And if you guys want to watch that, it turned out really well. I talked to the Coalition Against, the Missouri Coalition Against Domestic and Sexual Violence, and they were really liking that we had that program and everything, and they're going to watch it. I told them it really well. So I just wanted to update you guys on what's going on, I wanted to invite you to the rally. It's going to be a lot of fun. I think it might be big. I'm hearing a lot of things from a lot of different areas. The furthest one I've heard from is Jerseyville, Illinois, and I want to thank the city for the TTC grant. We applied for that, and we did get the amount we needed, and I'm very grateful for you guys having that grant. So that's all it is in that show. We've been really busy organizing it and everything, I think it's going to turn out good. The vehicles are going to be in the water park, parking lot, and then everybody that visits will go across at the community center and park there, and then you can cross over and park in the, or eat in the pavilion area, and there's the playground there, too, for the kids to play in. Some of the people I work with, my clients, are going to have T-shirts that they've decorated and painted on their own, that's going to hang on a clothesline, so that'll be cool, too. You'll be able to have a little connection with our community victims through that. It's going to be a really good event, so we want everybody to come. Thank you all for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy. Any other public comment at this time? Okay. With that, we will move on to tonight's consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move on to old business tonight. We do have a first reading, Bill Number 4631. This is an ordinance approving a memorandum of agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated, a Missouri corporation, to modify the initial professional service agreement dated August 12, 2010.
Oh. Happy did want to bring up a little bit of discussion, I guess not in particular about this, but earlier in the week, Mike and I had a chance to sit down with Derek and Corey with some concerns, you know, one being the increase and some other issues and stuff, and brought up the fact of, you know, with our agreement, you know, we provide millions of dollars worth of items for them to do their job and stuff. And, you know, one of the reasons we made some change was a couple of years ago, was to get our equipment and make sure some more of our assets and stuff like that were up to speed and to be accomplished that. And going forward with the changes they made, I was concerned that we would maintain those levels of maintenance and stuff, and I'm pretty much convinced it's going to stay the same or be better. So I hats off to them, and I think it'll be a good thing going forward.
Good.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, so I just want to make one more comment before we go on. I appreciate them going back and making these adjustments. It's not, you know, it's about $5,000 savings, but we'll take every bit, so I'm appreciative that they were willing to do that and help us with our budget and services that they provide, so I'm very appreciative of that.
All right, I believe we've got a motion and a second. Joe, do you have discussion or just?
Letting you know in a second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Any second reading on this?
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for a second reading of Bill Number 4631. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. This will be a second reading of Bill Number 4631. This is an ordinance approving a memorandum of agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated, a Missouri corporation, to modify the initial professional service agreement dated August 12, 2010.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Sue, would you do a roll call, please?
Elder woman Dobbs? Yes. Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Reinen?
Yes.
Seven yes votes, zero no, one absent. Bill Number 4631 now becomes ordinance number 4554.
Thank you. Move to a second reading of Bill Number 4632. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve Community Access Television Board, I-90/991.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Sue, would you do a roll call, please?
Elder woman Dobbs? Yes. Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Reinen?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes, zero no, and one absent. Bill Number 4632 now becomes ordinance number 4554.
Thank you. Take us to a second reading of Bill Number 4633. This is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into and execute a master services agreement with Aptigie Incorporated of Little Rock, Arkansas, to develop and host the city government website.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Sue, would you do a roll call, please?
Elder woman Dobbs? Yes. Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Reinen?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes, zero no, and one absent. Bill Number 4633 now becomes ordinance number 4555.
Thank you. It's going to be a second reading of Bill Number 4635. This is an ordinance authorizing the city of St. Genevieve to accept the proposal of Carl Brown of GettingGreatGrades.com for a rate analysis of the water and sewer funds.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Sue, would you do a roll call, please?
Elder woman Dobbs? Yes. Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Reinen?
Yes.
Seven yes votes, zero no, and one absent. Bill Number 4635 now becomes ordinance number 4556.
Thank you. It's going to be a second reading of Bill Number 4636. This is an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the city of St. Genevieve for the fiscal year 2024 budget relating to various revenue and expenditure increases.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Sue, would you do a roll call, please?
Elder woman Dobbs? Yes. Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Reinen?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Seven yes votes, zero no, and one absent. Bill Number 4636 now becomes ordinance number 4557.
Thank you. This will be a second reading of Bill Number 4637. This is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 and approving an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Sue, would you do a roll call, please?
Elder woman Dobbs? Yes. Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Reinen?
Yes.
Seven yes votes, zero no, and one absent. Bill Number 4637 now becomes ordinance number 4558.
Thank you. This is going to be a second reading of Bill Number 4638. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a proposal with Blacktop Sailor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Sue, would you do a roll call, please?
Elder woman Dobbs? Yes. Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Reinen?
Yes.
Seven yes votes, zero no, and one absent. Bill Number 4638 now becomes ordinance number 4559.
Thank you. And lastly, we've got a second reading of Bill Number 4639. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an engineering services contract with Cochrane Engineering for the Fourth Street Sidewalk Connection Project, federal project TAP-9901.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Sue, would you do a roll call, please?
Elder woman Dobbs? Yes. Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Reinen?
Yes.
Seven yes votes, zero no, one absent. Bill Number 4639 now becomes ordinance number 4560.
Thank you. That'll close out our old business, so take us to our new business for the evening. We have a first reading of Bill Number 4640. This is an ordinance calling for the general election of officers of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, to be held April 8, 2025, and providing notice to the general public.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a first reading of Bill Number 4641. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a proposal for professional services with Cochrane Engineering for a citywide paving program.
Discussion?
Yes.
I didn't have a chance to read all the way through this, but I didn't quite understand how it was being set up. This is just for the existing streets, this is not for the new development, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
New development will be a separate, because we're looking at the whole subdivision at that point, so that's including the streets, but it's sewer, water, everything else.
So this is just the existing streets for all the repairs and upgrades that we're going to do for the existing streets?
Yep. We wanted to get this going.
No other question?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Close out the business for this evening. Any other business to bring forth at this time? Okay, if that's the case, then we will adjourn. End of order, and we will look for approval of tonight's agenda. We do have a motion and a second, though. Work session, item number one, this is a no parking on North Fifth from Merchant to Merchant.
No, and a concern from Mr. Brownie, who's here in the audience tonight, about backing out of his driveway. If somebody's parked on Fifth Street on the west side, he has trouble negotiating out that driveway. We found that there is no, there's no parking from Merchant up to Jefferson, but nothing down from Market to Merchant. So our recommendation is go ahead and put a no parking zone there, we can sign it, we can paint it yellow, however you want to do that, but it probably would be best to not have parking allowed on that side of the road anyway, as a one-way, because it's a tight street.
Is that a cemetery side?
Yeah. So on the other side, there's still parking, so that wouldn't...
That makes sense.
I kind of swore we did that already.
I was going to say, I thought...
I think it's just from...
From Merchant up to...
Yeah, that's our cookbook.
Because that gets even tighter up there, where they put that bigger sidewalk in.
I was thinking...
In a perfect world, if everyone parks correctly, it's not that big of an issue, but when they park a little further away, it gets...
Yeah, and mostly he has that issue if there's an event up there, because people are parking in that spots. There's not a lot of events, but of course, when that happens, is when he needs to get out of the driveway.
Right. I thought it was already done, so I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, we'll bring it back as an ordinance at the next meeting.
Okay. Perfect. All right, nothing else on that topic, I don't believe, so we'll move to work session item number two, that'll be workers' compensation audit.
We had our audit, this one turned out not to be so wonderful. As you can tell, we have a $14,000, $14,333 increase. Couple of things that we found was that we didn't require, because the state doesn't require workers' compensation for single proprietorships, we have used some contractors that didn't have workers' comp, that we contracted with throughout the year. They came back and said, "Well, if they don't, then you're going to have to, we'll require it as your insurer, so that they're covered in case something happens." That is allowed by state statute. So because of that, we're going to have to enforce more strictly our requirement for contractors, and they'll have to have workers' compensation, which I've worked with K&amp;J, it looks like they've already purchased theirs, so they'll be fine with the cemetery maintenance, but we've used others for tree trimming and for other projects, and because of that, and because of the audit that they did, that they kicked it up. The other part that kicked it up is our salary increases that we've had over the last couple of years, and that's probably 50% of that increase. So it was, it's worth it for the employees, to keep the employees, but just so you know, that's where that number came from. We had a, we've been working with, we protested the increase, and we've been communicating back and forth with the representative. He sent both last year's and this year's audit, we had a chance to look at both the numbers again, and that's, it's because of the salary increases, the most of, most of it was.
So theoretically, this is looked at every year, correct?
Yes.
So theoretically, next year, when we show no contractors that don't have anything, it could bring it back down?
Yep.
Which will just increase it somewhere else?
Happy was our mod factor.
We are at, I didn't bring that paperwork in, but we are at like 1.25? No, I'm sorry, 1.9. We're at 1.9, because we had answers.
We're still up there.
We're still up there, but we got one more year to get through it, and then we're in better shape. We should be down below 1 at that point.
That's our five-year...
I think so, a five-year or three-year window. We're on the outside of the three-year.
Right. Because we had two, right?
Yes. We're working towards it, we're getting there, but yeah, this kind of, this kind of surprised us with the total increase.
Was that reflected in our budget conversation?
Um, when you say budget conversation... We're working towards it. We're getting there, but, yeah, that's kind of, that's kind of surprised us with the, the total increase.
Was that reflected in our budget conversation? I guess.
Um, when you said budget conversation.
Well, what were we, do we budget?
No.
In addition?
This will be, this will exceed what we had calculated for, for budget this year.
Yeah.
We have, we had an increase, we didn't have that much.
Yeah, yeah.
And you don't know it until they come in an audit.
Yeah.
And Sue's the one that works with them and gets all the information that they need. And so we've been, we've been talking back and forth with their, why that increase exists. We may still get, may, we may still get to talking down a little bit, we'll see.
All right, any other questions on that particular topic? Uh, we'll move down to work session item number three. Um, this is a personnel matter, so there is an option to close this meeting?
Motion to go, go into closed session and discuss personnel.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to go into closed session. Uh, Sue, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderwoman Dobbs?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
All right, back in open session.
All right, so everything stays the same with the job description. We will put that out there. Again, we're going to have to advertise in various locations. Um, now we need to talk about setting up a committee, which I would recommend, but not a large committee. Kind of like what we did with the, uh, with the tourism director. We had just three people, and I think it would, it worked out quicker and better than trying to get a, a blue ribbon panel that includes people, you know, from different sectors of the community. And I know that's, it's, that's the best way to do it. I would, you know, we'll take any recommendations people want to tell us, things they want to see in a police chief, and we'll take those into consideration. But we get a, a number of people.
I don't think we need outside.
Over five.
Mayor and the board and yourself, or, you know.
I mean, do you want the board to do the interviews?
I don't know if you need the whole, a whole board.
Right.
I think we're going to get a board.
Right.
We have a committee that's agreed to.
Yeah, so the mayor said he'd like to do it. I can do that, because it is a direct report. Um, and we can pull, I would either say one or two at most.
Amen.
Okay. I'll be at one. You want to do it? Okay.
Good, we can blame you guys.
Okay. That's it. Because once you start getting too many people, it becomes very disorganized. And then trying to, let's schedule it, and then get, and get troublesome.
And that, that's my only concern, is my availability in town. So if somebody else wants to take part in that. We can zoom you in, though, too. Yeah, I mean, if we need to. I mean, we did some of the tourism director interviews in that fashion. So, I mean, we, we could easily do that if we need to.
So the, the plan is, we put it out there, we try for 21 to 30 days. Um, we have the amount of applications that we get. The committee will go through the first group, I would say, and narrow it down to maybe a couple of candidates that we'll bring to the board, if that sounds, and I, I will say, this is almost what Bond Terror did.
Well, that's how we, at U2, we did the exact same thing.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that works better.
That's good or bad, that's how we. Well, that's what you got, so there you go.
Are there, are there any type of, uh, organizations or places where you, you can, uh, advertise this job, where it's just law enforcement professionals are looking at it? I know we have like a Missouri Bankers Association, right? Where jobs are posted there, where, you know, that, it's like a dedicated spot for somebody that might be interested in doing that, that could, they could go find that position pretty easily.
Maybe Police Chiefs Association.
Yeah, and maybe some, some.
And that was the other thing, yep. Yeah, that's always.
I'm just curious if they had some kind of, like, organization that oversees it and says, hey, by the way, here's the, all the job postings and.
MML, MML has their job listings, and so that's, you know, throughout Missouri. Um, those are probably the three spots I was thinking of. We'll put it in the local newspaper, just because, but.
Okay.
And that's all I've got with that, unless somebody else has any questions.
Um, can you give us an update on Bond?
Yeah, yeah. In your, in your, at your seats, I just updated the, I wanted to give you the boat chart, so you could compare one to the other. So we've updated when we think we're going to hit certain milestones, uh, with the streets and subdivisions. So just take a look at where we, where we think we're going to be, because we've already missed a couple of milestone deadlines. But I don't think that puts us into, uh, a, a problem. I think we're, we're moving along, and really, it's, it's, it's very optimistic to say they'd be building homes in January of 2026, but I'm going to keep it there, you know, that's what we, what we end up with. So we're, we're doing the streets tonight. We'll have something about subdivisions coming to you soon that you can approve, and we can start working through that process. And then we'll be, um, and then we'll eventually open it up for, uh.
When you say you're going to bring something to us, what, what do you mean by that?
A contractual agreement. First, it'll be the engineering agreement for drafting the subdivision. And then we'll have the actual subdivision plans come and get a, and go through